We lost Laura. Actually. Here she is. Will it make the noise? Recording in progress? Are we good? Okay, everybody, we're getting started. Counsel Ben, we're getting started. All right, it is 6:07 and we will bring our work session to order. We have one item on our agenda tonight that is continued discussion of short-term rental regulation ordinance and nuisance nuisance party ordinance with Brian.
In the city of Mission. And then the other was for a prohibiting nuisance parties in the city of Mission. So after some healthy discussion, we took all of your questions and comments and went back and did a little more research and digesting and worked with Mr. Turner, our city attorney, kind of refining the final draft that you have before you tonight. So it's really out any further ado, I think I'll just kind of jump into you when I go to the next screen. Kind of the things we captured from the last work session in May was a cap on the number of short-term rental dwelling units per property. A cap on the number of short-term rental licenses held by an owner. Kind of review the fines and penalties. Review of requirements for registered agent. Collection of transient guest tax and then inspection of short-term rental dwelling units. So I will kind of go through the slide. The PowerPoint presentation tonight and kind of touch upon all of those as I review the changes that we've made to the draft ordinance. So I want to go to the next slide. The first section of the ordinance is the purpose section. And we took this and we kind of beat it up a little bit more just to provide a little more clarity as to why we're doing this. And hopefully it'll provide some guidance to the courts of wherever challenged through litigation. So we added that section in bold. So we had the purpose of this chapter is to outline regulations and requirements related to the use of residential or commercial properties as short-term rentals to assure the health, safety and welfare with those occupying short-term rentals, then to promote the protection of neighborhood character and quality of life or surrounding properties. To balance the preservation of existing housing stock in the city. Limit nuisances created by short-term rentals and promote affordable housing. So again, just to kind of beef up that purpose section to provide a little more clarity and reason why we're doing this. Okay. The next section, 675-030 is definitions. For the most part, the definitions were left as is, but we did modify a few dwelling unit. We had previously defined as being kind of a habitable unit with like restroom and health facilities and cooking and kind of live space and sleeping space, the sort of a contained habitable unit. And then further discussing that, we realized that some kind of strange to me, but some actually just rent a bedroom. So that's necessarily meet that definition. So we kind of backed off some of those those terms and words in that definition and made a little bit more broad. We also put in a definition for hotel. And as you read through the ordinance, this is to provide some clarity that we're not talking about hotels and that short-term rental units are not hotels. They're kind of two separate animals, if you will. And then finally, management agent, and I'll get a little bit more into that as we go further. So the next one, please. So this really speaks to the cap. So this is section 675-040, short terminal license required. And this is a pretty detailed section. We get into the application and what's all in the applicant application. And then we added a section C where we touch upon the number of dwelling units per parcel. And we kind of struggled with this. Do we just put a flat number in there? How do we treat that? If you, if you say four, for example, you know, I'm renting four dwelling units in a single-family home, that could be a bedroom, maybe two bedrooms, a basement apartment to carry a child out back. And I don't think we really want that. And so kind of started thinking about zoning and defining that around zoning districts. And so that's how we came up with this criteria here. One dwelling unit per parcel of property that's zone R1 or the townhouse district are three. Two dwelling units per parcel of property zone R2, R2 are typically duplex housing. You only have just a few small neighborhoods that are zoned R2. And then our downtown neighborhood district and those areas are primarily north and south of Johnson Drive between Lamar and Noll, really almost like Woodson and Noll. And those districts are kind of that transition zone between the activity along Johnson Drive and the more residential areas to the north and they include apartment buildings, single-family homes, they kind of a mix of between those two. So smaller multifamily properties. Go back one more. And then finally, four dwelling units per parcel of property zoned R4 through R6. Those are all our apartment districts as well as MS1 and MS2 Main Street, which is essentially those properties along Johnson Drive and just off of Johnson Drive. So we have a couple of commercial buildings. We actually have one commercial building on Johnson Drive that has a second floor that's being rented out right now, short-term rental units. Okay, now you got it. And then we also placed a cap on the number of rental licenses that can be held by the owner. And we put that at two. There's really no magic reason for that number, but we just kind of thought two sounds like a good number to sort of control that. And then we added a lot of language around what if the person has more than two already? So somebody makes application next year and they have four parcels of property. So we put in a grandfather provision and that's that language that speaks to kind of grandfathering those folks in and get some criteria around how we do toward de-grandfather them over time. If they sold a property, they wouldn't be able to get ones replaced it, or they stopped renting, then that go away, didn't apply for an application, then all of that would go away.
And Brian, that sort of ties into that preservation of housing stock goal, right? That you're not just going to have one owner buy up a whole bunch of properties and convert them.
Yeah, this is going to really reduce or eliminate those investment properties that are coming best and buyers that are coming in, buying up properties and then turning them into short-term rental. Okay, next one.
So I think we already know that there are some that have not completed applications to let us know that they're short-term rentals. So what if we come across someone who owns five short-term rentals? They've not done an application, but we figure that out. Are we grandfathering them in?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, it'll be.
But I think we'll get to that piece later as we walk through some other pieces of the ordinance in terms of collecting data on trying to get the baseline of how many short-term rental properties we actually have currently. And then tied also to an effective data implementation data for all of them.
Yeah, and that's why I was going to say is, is the grandfathering would only be up to the effective date of the ordinance, correct?
Well.
So if you just didn't, if you just failed to register and bought up ten houses, you wouldn't get to be grandfathered in if the ordinance was already in effect.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Right.
Question there.
Yeah.
Just going back to our definition of owner. Are we confident enough that LLCs and shell corporations and things like, you know, entities like that would still be able to count in what we're saying here with two pieces of property?
Yeah, that question was asked by one of our staff members earlier this week. I feel pretty confident with that, you know. Because what we're going to be asking for is the name of the the chief operating officer on the LLC or the name of a partners, plurals, part of that ownership. And we're going to be asking for some pretty detailed information. Address, driver's license number. So I think after a while you could kind of start to match that up if you have multiple LLCs or ownership groups that this is essentially the same owner that's just kind of and that's it's pretty cumbersome to apply for an LLC, get all that set up. I mean, that would be you really have to be jumping through a lot of hoops just to buy property and have a license, multiple licenses. So.
I think, and Brian's right, this came up as we were kind of discussing internally this week and we didn't make a change, but I think we could also add something to the application form where you, as you're filling out the application form, would answer, do, do you own any other short-term rental properties in the city under another name or as part of another corporation? And that would, you know, if they falsify that information, we kind of, we have that, but I think that's a simple ask at that point, which puts the onus back on them to identify. Yeah, or maybe too, on that section of the ordinance, maybe legal could look at, do we want to add affiliates, you know, or shared partnership, or maybe some other language to clarify that we don't mean the exact owner, we mean sort of effectively the same owner.
I think that's where my question was.
I think that would be helpful. Yeah.
In this applications section for short terminal licenses, 67050. Of course, we have the fee, we left that blank. And that's kind of a question for you all tonight. And we can ponder that a little bit and come back to it, but here are some examples of what other cities in the area are charging. Kansas City, Missouri is charging $200 annually, Shawnee, Shawnee, Kansas is charging 500. And then Marion's 300, then summer's low is 25 or $75, even $30 a dwelling unit. So it's kind of all over the place, but it seems to be the average is about $150 annually for a license. Go on to the next one. So 675-070, we talked about the duties of an owner. And this is where I'll talk about the designation of a management agent. So we had a registered agent was required for anybody that lived outside of Johnson County. And Jacob reviewing that kind of thought that might be violation of the the dormant commerce clause, which is a legal doctrine. And so we kind of went back and we reworded that a little bit. And I picked out this language frankly from Kansas City, which I thought was pretty good. Identified as a management agent and somebody who lives within 40 miles, what's required for anybody that lives beyond 40 miles from the property. So if you're an owner, but you live beyond 40 miles from the property that you're renting, you need to have a management agent. And the management agent is somebody that's responsible for the property, can do routine inspections at least once a month. Is willing to serve, to take, be jointly and severely responsible with the owner for the compliance with all terms and conditions of the chapter as well as accept service or process on notices from the city. So those are the parameters for a management agent. And that's outlined in the duties of the owner section of the.
And Brian, that's required for all properties, but if the owner lives within the 40 miles, they can be their own agent. Is that right?
Right. So very, if you, if you own the property, you live there. Renting out a unit, you're kind of your own agent. Next one. The draft that we shared with you in May had some provisions for collection of transient guest tax. The more we looked into this, the more convoluted it got. And so we just simply removed it. None of the other cities in Johnson County that have adopted the short-term rental regulations or ordinances are requiring collection of short-term, of transient guest tax. And the state statute is a little vague on it and the Department of Revenue is not really sure exactly how to collect it. So the jury is still kind of out in all of that. That's something we'll certainly monitor. And if it starts to be a trend and we're seeing some movement on that, either in legislation or other cities kind of picking up that process, we can certainly come back at a later date and amend it to to begin collecting transient guest tax.
And that's maybe something we should raise with our friendly state delegation members, it sounds like.
There, yeah.
I think in reading, there's some definition challenges between the transient guest tax statutes and how we want to choose to define what would qualify as a short-term rental. So I think in addition to some of the other questions Brian raised, I think it just makes it more complicated for us to sort out in the, in the interim. But again, we can make ordinance revisions in the future if necessary, or we desire to do that. And we do have some properties that are currently submitting transient guest tax, but they're not identified by address. We don't know where it's coming from. It's just coming from a platform that's transmitting transient guest tax.
I don't know if this applies or not, but is there a notification requirement in a neighborhood to let them know that one of the properties is an Airbnb or a short-term rental?
We don't have that in our ordinance. Some cities do, but we don't have that. Yeah.
What would be the benefit or the lack thereof of having the notification?
I think it's simply to put the neighbors on notice that, you know, their next door neighbor or the house down the street is a short-term rental unit or is being rented as a short-term rental unit. Just so that they're aware of it.
But we don't have any intention.
We did not provide that. I think it'd be kind of hard. Again, it's sort of the honor system. So they would have to sign on their application, they had notified all the neighbors and we just have to kind of take their word for it. Wouldn't really be a way for us to verify.
I mean, Casey Mo keeps a list of registered properties, so we could certainly keep on our website, a list of registered short-term rental properties. So if somebody wanted to go investigate and determine if they, either they suspected or wanted to see, I think we could make, easily make that resource available once we have that master list.
Thank you.
Fines. We had a provision in the original draft. And it was right there, the application section. Anybody that failed to apply for a license was automatically fined $500. And Mr. Turner didn't feel real comfortable with that language and suggested we remove that and we place everything under this section, 675-130, violation of penalty. And that's really kind of the knux of it. If anybody violates any provision of this ordinance and we prosecute and we win our case in court, if you will, there would be, you know, fine up to $1,000. That could be applied to that individual and/or six months of jail time. So, so if they if they fail to apply for a license, I would think the first time that we caught them, we notified them might simply be, I don't, I wasn't aware I had to have a license. I'll be down at city hall in the morning to complete that. But if we find somebody who's just, hey, we told you had to apply for a license and you're still renting, we told you five times now, that would be the opportunity where we we send them a formal notice that they need to appear in court. We're going to prosecute.
Yeah, Debbie.
I may have missed this, but what is the definition of short-term?
Short-term rental is going to be anything that's rented for 28 days or less. Yeah.
So if someone secures an agreement with an owner about a property for three months, that doesn't, it doesn't.
Correct. That would not be a short-term rental. Yeah.
But that would be under our regular.
They're doing a regular rental license. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
And again, I believe, well, is that, does that come, that also comes from the transient guest tax statutes, that, that dividing line between 28 and 29 days days.
Yeah. 28 days is February, so it's.
So if.
The month of least amount of days in it.
If somebody comes in and initially wants 15 days and then they find out they're selling their house and they need to move somewhere and that would be a perfect property for another two months, they have to come in and get a different license? Or what, how does that work?
Well, the owner of the property would have to come in and get a what we call probably a long-term license, rental license. And we're, we have a, obviously we have a rental license program in place right now. And it doesn't speak to timelines for rentals. It's just always been kind of assumed that traditional rentals, one year, one-year lease on an apartment. So we will need to go back and modify that ordinance to reflect that a rental, a long-term rentals, anything that's 29 days or more. And if somebody were to rent a house for three months in the circumstances that you're describing, then the owner would have to get a long-term rental license.
Thank you.
I think you'd find there are places where if you try to stay in a hotel and extend your reservation to a certain amount, they'd say, well, you gotta leave and come back. Can't have you for.
Check out, come back.
This might be a strange question, but are they allowed to carry both a short-term and a long-term rental license at the same time?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, because we do have some multifamily properties that are renting out two or three units on a short-term rental basis. So they would have to have both licenses.
So there, on the question of length of short-term versus long-term, there was a case study that showed that having your short, short-term be closer to 60 days was more in the optimal range. And since we have this question of like, what constitutes short versus long, I wonder if when we look at those two together, that's closer to the timeline that we would start to question whether it should be considered a long-term rental or not. I don't know how many people are trying to stay for two whole months in a single place. I have had to because of moving before. And so like, that's, that's, I realize is a gray area, but the study was out of Geneva and they said that 60 days was kind of that sweet spot for not overusing the short-term rentals, but also not hindering long-term rentals either. So maybe that's sort of the area we look at.
It's a policy decision in the council if you want to do that or not. So I could say pretty much everybody, all the ordinances I looked at in 30 days or 28 days.
And that lines up with the transient guest tax rules, right?
If we ever were to go to transient guest tax, you know, then that would be.
Could get into a situation where somebody maybe has to collect transient guest tax if they're in, what, 30 to 60 day window or something?
Yeah.
And I believe the long-term, the rental license fee, current rental license fee for a single-family property is $62
Correct.
a year. So it's the lower sort of cumbersome. But if you look at section 675-040, number or letter E is where it addresses that the short-term rental license shall not be considered in place of or as a waiver to the requirement to obtain a rental dwelling license. So one of those areas where we will need to go back into chapter 635 and make some revisions based on wherever we land with this new chapter.
Okay, next slide. Just on some other items that were discussed at May work session. The nuisance party ordinance and the definition of nuisance party, we slightly modified that to include obstruction of emergency vehicles from passing. So I think we may wind up modifying that a little bit more, give some discussions that Chief and I were having before the work session tonight, but we want to make that clear for the police department. So it's not subjective. So we want to have some very clear language in there. What is obstruction of a sidewalk or a street in terms of the free flow of traffic and so. And then inspection of short-term rentals. We have that kind of safety certificate checklist that we're going to ask the applicants to complete and sign when they fill out their application. And there was some language in that that kind of alluded to doing inspection of short-term rental units. And we, I suspected this would be the case, that we felt that that might be in violation of Kansas State Statute 12 161138, which essentially prohibits cities from adopting a program that would require periodic interior inspections of residential property. So probably about 90% or more of our short-term rental units would be most likely single-family homes. And right now, our current rental program captures owners that are renting single-family homes. But we're not doing inspections of those single-family homes. We're only doing inspections on the multifamily home, multifamily properties. Because we're kind of viewing those as commercial properties. So for the single-family homes, they're under the rental program, we're not doing inspections, but for those multifamily properties, we are. So just kind of thought, maybe we go ahead and just take that out of the application to reduce any confusion on that. And then in the ordinance, we have an effective date of January 1st, 2025. This will allow some time just to kind of refine our process a little bit. Begin doing some research on the number of rental units that are actually out there as short-term rental units. And then begin notifying those individuals as well as just kind of notifying the general public.
Brian, to that point and to return to the up to $1,000 fine. My understanding was that Casey Mo kind of gave a grace period and then had a more aggressive fine if you didn't register in the first instance.
I cannot find anything in there. I read their, their ordinance again this afternoon. I can't find anything like that.
Okay.
So they're relying, just like we are on the penalty clause and that $1,000. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Finally, to enforcement. And there is a software company called Granicus, which provides a lot of software platforms for municipalities. I'm familiar with them in another city where we use them for agenda management. So we would type up our packet items and so forth, load it all into the system. Then they would take the, the video from the meeting, sort of apply it with the packet item and everything. So that one is sitting at home watching this can kind of see it seamlessly. But apparently they've branched out to a number of other applications in the past few years. One of which is host compliance for short-term rental units. And they have a pretty sophisticated platform. And they will essentially go out onto the internet and go visit Airbnb, Verbo, all of the different booking services on the web and identify those short-term rental units that are being listed in our community geographically. So they have the ability to be able to go in their spot. This one's in Mission, that one's in Roland Park. And kind of isolate those that are being offered admission. And then they will be able to identify the property owner. They can take a screenshot of the listing on the computer, this kind of backup documentation. And then we as staff can go in there and download this information, you know, kind of see us doing it maybe once a week or so. And just kind of creating a list of those that we find and matching them up with the application. If there's one that's missing, then we know that we need to contact those folks and let them know that you need to apply for a license. And that's $3,000 a year. And I thought that would be a pretty good tool for us to use, at least for the first few years, as we kind of get our feet wet with this and get up and running with it. So.
So on the inspection thing, it would, maybe it seems like maybe a good idea to leave something in place for like the mixed-use units where that is allowed. And also to maybe give some consideration to, I'm reading the statute, it says the lawful occupant residing in the unit may request an inspection. Maybe if the Airbnb, you know, occupant calls and requests an inspection and there's something wrong, then we can enforce something against the short-term rental license and not just leave it out entirely, something like that. You know, we can't come and do it on our own whims.
Yeah, we.
If the, if the occupant asks and we find something wrong, then we can still.
We do tenant request inspections right now on all units, regardless of the multifamily or single-family. That, that point, the tenant is inviting us to come in and do an inspection. And then we actually are doing inspections on some of the short-term rental units in the multifamily.
Right.
Which is just easier for the property owners to say, I've got a unit over here. Why don't you go inspect that? It's, it's empty right now. It's vacant. That's how I've kind of caught some of these at the multifamily properties. But we could probably provide some language around that, so.
I mean, I would, I would hate to have it, you know, if, if the occupant invites us, yeah, you know, complains and invites us to come inspect. Hopefully we'd still be able to enforce something against the short-term license.
Brian, I had one other, um, language item in six, seven, five, point, one, oh, oh, B, this is where we're talking about, um.
Six, seven, five, what was the?
Oh, six, seven, five, uh, dot, dot, one hundred.
About one hundred, okay.
Um, in section B of that, that's where we're talking about, um, the grounds for denying, suspending, revoking, or not, not renewing a license. And B, we use the phrase, um, penalties. And I was just thinking we should maybe change that to remedies because we've said, you know, granting this license or having this license is a privilege and penalties, I think, maybe sounds too punitive there to describe, you know, non-renewal of the license if you are violating our code. But maybe that's something we could take back to Jacob.
Okay, um, next slide. So next steps, um, so we were going to bring the STR license ordinance and the nuisance party ordinance to the August twenty-first city council. I don't think that's going to happen now. It's frankly, we're going to do some drafting and I'm just not going to get that done in the next few days before the city administrator goes out of town, so. We'll shoot for September. You're not going to see the packet before you leave. Then, uh, post the license and the app, all the whole ordinance and everything on our city website. Um, as well as the application material, just kind of for informational purposes and people who do learn about it and want to go ahead and apply, they can get that going. Uh, notify the public through social media and news media, uh, formal notices to STR owners that we are aware of or that we find through the Granicus application that we utilize. And then, um, begin that process for collecting applications and get that ready for January, so. Yep.
Do you know how many applications we currently have for short-term rentals?
We don't have any applications right now because we haven't adopted the ordinance yet. So there, that's, the answer is zero. Interestingly enough, when I was talking with Granicus, they kind of did an initial review and as of June, they identified, I think, approximately thirty short-term rental units that were listed in Mission. So I would imagine that's probably the going number on the average.
Brian, I know earlier you had, I think in jest, you know, five times was a number you had cited until you would then enforce, you know, the, the number. What is that number internally that we would reach until we would begin, you know?
I, I think probably more like two, maybe three, you know?
I, I hope it could skew more towards the lower side just because I think, you know.
Yeah, we're not going to let somebody just kind of drag on, you know, but it's going to be catching them, informing them, they decide not to apply, you know, maybe following up as to why. And then, um, if we catch them again, okay, this time you need to, we're getting a notice, so.
Yeah, Debbie?
Okay, looking at the, the short-term rental dwelling safety certification requirements. How much staff time is this going to take? If you look, I mean, if they, if somebody comes in three times a month, are you going to have to go through this checklist on every property for every time it turns over? Or what is, what's?
No, this will be for the application. So if I own a home in Mission that I want to rent out on a short-term basis, I would come into City Hall or go online, complete the application. Then I would go through this checklist and just check off the ones that I know to be true. It's, it's something on kind of on the honor system. And then at the end, I would sign it and submit that with my application. And that's good for a year.
It's good for a year.
Yeah. So that license and the application, everything's good for one year. And I can rent my unit out every weekend or a couple of times a year, or however often I want to during that period.
Are we currently doing inspections in-house or are we still, are we going back to Johnson County again on rentals?
We're doing them in-house, yeah. Neil LaFonska, our community development coordinators, doing all the rental inspection pro, inspections.
Thank you.
Need to come back to land on a license fee?
Yeah, I have a question about that. Um, this is related to the license fees, but also then the pre-approval of more than one property. Um, do we have a sense for what the percentage would be before the short-term rentals have a, a substantially negative impact on our community? It sounds like it's about one percent right now, if it's thirty, um, so like, is that the threshold we want to hold? I think Parkville maybe has it at one percent right now, if I, if I read that correctly today. And so I don't know if we know what our threshold would be, because I think that that would have to inform our choices about licensing fees and also the pre-approval of, of anyone who has more than two properties.
Yeah, I, I honestly can't tell you that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have a feel for that.
Yeah, that's my main outstanding concern is how much of the housing stock is, is, um, sort of locked up as short-term rentals.
I mean, I think.
I think step one will be let's collect the data.
To that, um, would be like some of the other cities in Johnson County Fairway, for example, where you have a distance.
Yeah.
You impose a distance requirement between, um, or you allows, you know, certain.
Yeah.
I don't know if Mission else. Anyway, I think that's the way you get at it. I'm not sure we would be able to set that threshold and say.
Well, and, and I'm sort of okay with letting the data come in and seeing what, what the scope of the problem is before we, yeah, bike shed it too much further.
And my understanding is Fairway did not have that in their initial ordinance and then they went back in and revised and added, added that.
And I think that's another opportunity to, you know, we're putting some, some barriers in place to buying up, you know, dozens of properties, but you know, let's see if somebody starts papering up LLCs left and right. I mean, maybe they're motivated, maybe not. Um, but if it's not a problem yet, then.
Yeah, and I think if we can tighten up, like to transpoint to, if we can tighten up that, that language in the ordinance, um, to sort of try to, try to prevent shell, shell owners and that sort of thing.
What is the distance requirement in Fairway?
No. Yeah, I mean, in, in my view, especially if we can't collect the transient guest taxes for now, I think we should have a more substantial license fee, maybe something more in the tune of a thousand dollars or something like that. Just because there are staff, staff resources dedicated to this and, you know, we've talked about adjusting some of our other fee schedules that have been off, off for a while, um,
Yeah.
Where we're undercharging for a lot of things that take staff time. And so that would be, that would be my thought. And then that, that way we make sure we're also covering, you know, the Granicus software and things like that, but.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think I ideally would like to see something closer to a, like a use-based transient guest tax, but in lieu of that, we should make sure that we're funding the ordinance, you know?
One of the things that, um, I know Brian, you mentioned is.
I'm higher than the highest city.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look at what rentals cost, what rentals cost tonight, and you know, some things I've read on, on profits and that sort of thing. I think a thousand dollars still seems reasonable for the full year license.
Yeah.
I don't know if staff has a position on that, but.
Councilmember Carpenter Davis may have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, one of the questions is, and I know Brian, you brought this up in talking with the chief and everything. What about the people that violate this often, you know, between cars that you can't get through the tra, the street? And then also the parties, um, you know, we have some people that are frequent flyers, so to speak, and how would that be managed?
Cheryl, just to clarify, you're talking about anyone, because the nuisance ordinance isn't specific to short-term rentals. So you're talking about anyone who would violate that nuisance ordinance?
Right, because that's the primary concern. We do have one in our neighborhood that we found out, but, um, it's becoming an issue. I don't know how often the police have been there yet. Would that have any role with, in terms of renewing their license or anything?
Well, um, yes, so if we find at the one of the requirements of the, um, let's find this provision here in the code.
Going to be six, seven, five, one, three, oh, E.
Zero, eight, six, seven, five, zero, eight, zero, short-term regulations, short-term rental regulations. The short-term rental of a dwelling or dwelling unit shall be subject to the following regulations. And if we go down to, I think, number four occupants of a short-term rental dwelling or dwelling unit shall comply with section two point one, two, one, five, point one, one, disturbing of the peace. Uh, next one, five occupants of a short-term rental dwelling or dwelling unit shall comply with section two, one, five, point one, one, three, which would be the nuisance party ordinance. And then generally obeying all other municipal codes, counties, state, federal laws. So if we find that parties like this are happening and ultimately the owner is responsible for enforcing these rules at their unit, then that would trigger reviewing their application of their license and either suspending that or revoking it altogether or taking some kind of action.
Cause six, seven, five, dot, one, oh, oh, A, one, says if you fail to meet the provisions of the chapter, then we can look at non-renewal or revocation, right?
Seven, five, one, three, oh, E, if you have any conviction, you, it shall result in immediate revocation of all short-term rental licenses, so not just the property for which you are being cited, any license that you have. And any such conviction under this section shall, shall be a basis for denying a future short-term rental license. We tried to put that piece in there. I think that has some pretty significant.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Leah, then Debbie, or, or sorry, Cheryl, did you have a clarification first?
No, thank you.
So in, in, uh, I had sent, uh, the, the person, the homeowner next to me that, that has a, uh, next door to me that has a, a short-term rental, um, I had sent him an invitation to come to the meeting tonight, just because I think everyone should have a voice. Um, but I did mention that, you know, things have quietened down since the, uh, initial party that kind of brought it to my attention. And, and he said that, um, on that house, they have outdoor cameras and then some sort of a noise sensor within the house, that if the level becomes a certain loudness, they're notified and then they take action against the people who are in the home. And, and the last time when that happened, they actually asked everyone in the home to leave, including the, the people who had rented the, the, the house. So I don't know if that's just something we could suggest to them for best practices or how we feel about listening devices inside of rentals.
Those are becoming pretty common, sound, sound level, average, average sound level.
I, I did hear a friend who's recently going to, I think it was Sonoma County, going to Wine Country in California. And they have a requirement on the sound meters and it's like a thousand dollars, but I think charged to the rental occupant if you violate like the sound meter, but that seems like maybe something to come back to if.
Yeah, I appreciate this.
As opposed to at the outset.
I'm not sure I'm Sonoma County grade yet.
Yeah. Yeah, Debbie?
Can you give me a definition of what constitute a party? Is it how many people? Is it the, the level of noise? Is it after a certain hour? What, what makes up a party? I can tell you the guy next to me at the lake is a, has forty people at a time there.
Yeah, those would be a lot of parties down at the lake.
Well, and this is just for nuisance parties, not just any party, right?
Yeah, so we define a nuisance party as socially gathering of five or more people on residential property that results in any of the following occurring at the site of the gathering or neighboring property or adjacent public street. And it lists off a bunch of things, you're like unlawful sale of, or furnishing, a possession of consumption of alcohol, unlawful use of possession of marijuana or any controlled substance, violation of the, of the peace ordinance, section two, one, five, point one, one, disturbing the peace.
Are there some hours defined around the party too?
No, no, it could be anytime, it could be
Anytime.
Middle of the day or middle of the night, yeah. Um, so there's just a number of things here.
Yeah, Debbie, that's in, it's two, one, five.
I read that. I was more concerned about the hours of the time and, you know, if there's five people in there.
Yeah.
I've read, read that, thank you.
Somebody feels that their next-door neighbor is creating a ruckus and they can call the police and the police go over there and find that all these definitions are being met, then that'd be a nuisance party.
And even if you're not, you're still disturbing the peace.
Well, and, and the maximum that any short-term rental property number of occupants that would be allowed is ten. So anything over ten on a short-term rental policy, according to the way that we've written that, you know, two per bedroom. Except to a maximum.
Well, and because the short-term rental ordinance also says that you can't have gatherings and parties, et cetera.
You can't have events or gatherings or any meetings of any kind where you're going to have outside guests coming in. So.
Debbie, disturbing the peace hours are, uh, ten to seven, Sunday through Friday and a little later on the weekend.
Seven P M?
Ten P M to seven A M is when they're, is when they're looking at noise specifically.
Right. Any final questions for Brian? Or Brian, did you have anything else that we need to cover?
Um, did we agree on a license fee?
So were people aligned on one thousand dollars, Ben?
I don't, I can't really explain why that, that feels a little high. I, I don't like to be outside the, you know, significantly outside our peers, so to speak, but I'm not, I, I'm not uncomfortable being at the high end of sort of the, the cluster, but.
We're about six hundred. It still is a not insignificant amount, but it's not dramatically higher than maybe the other cities.
The highest is five hundred, right?
Kansas City, correct, yeah. No, Shawnee, excuse me, that's right, Shawnee.
Should we base it on how much staff time this is going to take?
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm sympathetic to that, especially without collecting the guest tax.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was my thought is that this could potentially take a decent amount of staff time, both in managing the ordinances and then we have police time managing any concerns or issues. And we've gotten bitten on some other, you know, other fees, schedules that we need to update because they are not at all accurately reflecting staff time, but.
I think there'll be a fair amount of staff time at first, just kind of getting up and running, getting it going, but once we kind of get into a groove, probably not that much staff time, frankly.
Well, you can always lower it versus having it so low in the beginning that we become targets for it.
Have an initial fee and then it's down.
That's true. Could you have like a thousand dollar initial and a five hundred dollar renewal or something like that?
I like that, because I, I think that, you know, if people were, were shopping around to say, where do I want to buy a piece of property to do this? Ooh, Mission is a thousand dollars, maybe I'll look elsewhere.
I, I think that's driven more on available housing stock.
Yeah.
Or, and, you know, I, at that point, five hundred dollars versus a thousand.
I would contend that the higher it, the, the more we are an outlier on the high end, the more inclined people will be to not comply with, the more staff time it could take. Because we will be chasing people who think the fee is too high and they'll try to get, or that would be my concern with that. So I don't know if we can do something tiered, like, here's your initial. I mean, if we, if we look at the Granicus number, um, estimating the number of short-term rentals now at a thousand dollars, you'd be generating about eighteen thousand dollars a year.
I would also say uh, if you have a high fee, I, I, I expect most of these, if not all of them, to be sort of the professionally run, you know, businesses, right? Airbnbs that are literally, that are offered as sort of, uh, more or less always a short-term rental, right? But if you set the fee too high, you are pretty much telling people that want to maybe offer up a room or offer their house occasionally, too mu, it's too expensive for you, so.
Although that does help address some of the larger events, like
Yeah.
one time when I was on the way to the airport, when the, uh, draft was here, the NFL draft. And there was, um, my, my Lyft driver was telling me how his neighbor rented out his whole house for five, five thousand dollars for the weekend because of a big event, you know, and then you're going to have more
Yeah.
parties, et cetera. So I'm not sure we want the one-off renters anyway, but.
That's not, you're not talking about one-off renters. You're talking. That's not, you're not talking about one-off renters. You're talking about that instance where there's a spare bedroom or you have an additional dwelling, right?
Sort of an owner occupied, like all these, south while I'm gone type of thing, which.
Rent a room inside of them.
I'll say those probably aren't the majority, but it is a bit of a chilling effect. So I'm, I'm, I'm thinking about a balance between, yeah, let's make it, let's fund the, the ordinance and what it costs to administer without hopefully driving people away that want to try and do an honest business.
I guess that's why I like the initial higher price because you said, like, initially it's going to be a lot, like a generous portion of staff hours and then it'll go down, but I don't know if anybody feels like the one thousand at the beginning and then.
I am kind of seeing Laura's point though about, you know, then you don't have compliance and then it's more of a lift to get after them. So maybe something more in line with the metro makes, makes sense at the, at the, on the onset.
So the five hundred fee in Shawnee is, are they finding that that is accomplishing their goals necessarily? Like to either limit the short-term rentals or to make sure that people are registering them? Like are they, is that a, a fee that is comfortable and functional for them? Do we know?
I don't think it's, their program's old enough to probably have the data, but we can certainly reach out and see what sort of effect they think that has had.
Yeah.
I don't know if this really impacts my thought, but do we have a feel for an average nightly cost for, I don't know if that, okay.
Yeah, I'd probably say about a hundred and eighty or so, yeah, a hundred and seventy.
Yeah, certainly if you're going to do this for a few nights a year, you're not going to pay five hundred even, so. But that doesn't have to be the only consideration.
Well, we have to also remember the, uh, uh, World Cup is coming, so, you know.
And those, they can alter prices.
Yeah, everyone will quickly make their money.
Yeah. Well, I also look at this as an opportunity for people too. I mentioned people are moving. We have someone who has an Airbnb in Fairway. It's their own house they're renting out for fourteen thousand dollars a month. And, but when people are moving and they need somewhere else to go, you know, it's an opportunity too. And I will tell you, some of the ones I've seen, the yards are pristine. You can't just be advertising something for X amount and think you're going to get, you know, a just trashy house. I mean, some of them are kept up really well. That's why at the beginning of our conversations, I was really more on a, let's look at a case by case. If somebody's abusing something, then let's go after them, but just don't punish the whole. So I'm real comfortable with some of the stuff you've come up with, Brian. And I would go for a, a middle, a middle, maybe six hundred, but.
For me, the thousand feels too high for, for equitable reasons. On the one hand, if we have people who are trying to, to actually create passive income from small parts of their own homes that are not being used, like that's something that we have to consider. But then also so much about short-term rental opportunity is aligned in unequitable ways. And so like the thousand dollar fee keeps out the big, big things, but it also keeps out the, the real potential and the reason that these short-term rental platforms were created in the first place. And so like five hundred feels maybe a little low, six hundred feels comfortable to me, a thousand felt. At first, I also couldn't quite put my finger on why. It felt too high, but after some thought.
So do we want to say six? It seems like maybe that's kind of where most people are at.
Also cool if you want to just say five hundred and align with Shawnee too.
See what happens there, yeah.
We can always come back and revisit the cost.
True.
Five hundred is what I'm hearing?
I'll go five hundred.
Works for me.
And I would just note in that section that if someone applies for a license, pays the fee, gets into it, realizes this isn't for me, it's non-refundable. We, because we've done the legwork, we will prorate it based on if you don't, if you don't make your application until June, whatever month you make your application will prorate that annual fee. But if you get into it and then change your mind mid-year, we're not going to refund that money.
So renewals will be the same for everyone, not?
Yes, calendar year regardless. So that's why we, we sort of prorate. We do that with, it's very consistent with how we manage our business licensing. So those run July one through June thirtieth. And we prorate those depending on when you open your business and we don't refund if you close your business early. And so the ordinance speaks to the calendar year for the renewals and that renewal applications are due by October first, so that we have plenty of time ahead of that next year to again evaluate, have we had complaints? Have we had issues, any of those kinds of things and, and do that timely, but everybody will be on the same cycle. Otherwise I think it's just, that becomes administratively a real challenge to manage.
Yeah, just thinking about the sort of one-offs like World Cup. So if somebody decides to let out their, their house as a short-term rental and, and not apply or pay the fee, then they could be fined, what is it, up to a thousand dollars? Okay, so it's not really finding a way to weasel out of that and then just pay a small fee. Okay.
Yeah, although if you're getting five thousand dollars for your house, you might.
Well, you know.
About risking the fine, but that's always going to be those cases.
I think if your thought is, I'm not going to pay the license fee, then it should at least be possible.
Yeah, it shouldn't have some teeth.
License fee, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
But with, if there's multiple people renting houses, you're, nobody's going to know, are they really?
Yeah, we're hoping these people are worth their money.
Catch them using Granicus, yeah.
All right, any final questions for Brian?
Let's just run down, because I think, I don't, I want to make sure that our lists align with where I think we need to go back and make changes. We've, we can plug in the dollar amount for the license fee, which was a blank. We talked about there, that there is not a notification requirement for neighbors, but that's something that once we generate the list of licensed short-term rentals, we can make that available, which I think addresses Councilmember Kring's question. We talked about adding something to the application about how to sort of weed out shell corporations or make sure that, that we're able to manage that.
I think to the ordinance as well, beefing up the owner, language and the ordinance on that.
Any other changes to, I mean, I had a question that I'll, I can ask Brian offline, but my question in looking at the two units in a downtown neighborhood district, do we have any single-family residences currently that fall within that zoning classification?
Yes.
And so I don't know if that.
Yeah, I think downtown neighborhood to me is the type of place where if, I don't even know if we have anything in DND that has an, like an ADU, but like I'd be okay with those being let out in downtown neighborhood.
So you're still limited to two, but I just wanted to.
There is around bedroom and.
Two bedrooms, right?
Two bedrooms or the apartment down, apartment unit down below, carriage house out back, yeah.
I feel like that lines up with the DND kind of.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because I had that.
Yeah, I tried to poke some holes in the zoning too. The R three, one unit makes sense.
And then we talked about potentially adding language that was, made it clear that a renter or occupant could request an inspection.
Right, because the state statute allows that. We'd want that to then hang on the, the short-term rental license if they fail something.
So Brian, did you have other areas where you feel like we need to revise the ordinance?
Just a little bit of wordsmithing, but no.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the only other thing that popped into my mind was if there's something that's worth posting or notifying the, the occupants, like here's the rules you're expected to follow and here's who to call if you have a problem. Okay.
That's included in there, those good neighbor guidelines. And so it talks about them have, being conspicuously posted.
Yeah, between.
If we're not in the property, it's hard to tell that, but certainly we could, you know, we can also make that available. And I, and I know, you know, after we had the discussion, I think a year or more ago, and we were talking about what Overland Park was doing after they had the issue with the party. They don't actually license the short-term rentals, according to the research that Brian's done, but they do provide an opportunity through their website to report issues. And we did that and we got all kinds of other reported concerns, not really anything related to short-term rentals. But that's certainly something that we could maintain if we're creating these provisions on the website. We can leave that opportunity open to report issues or.
So if we don't have an application process yet, do you have any idea whatsoever approximately how many short-term rentals we have?
Thirty.
According to Granicus, it's thirty. That's, that's what they identified when I talked to them in June.
That's who's identified.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would imagine it's going to be, that's going to probably your monthly average is about thirty, thirty listings.
Because they're pulling their data from all the different listing websites, right?
That may go up with World Cup, who knows, yeah.
I might have missed this, but where did we land on potentially limiting the density of these? Like one every one thousand feet or something like that? I heard it came up, but I don't remember where we landed on it.
We didn't. We, we don't have any distance requirements right now. Really just the, the cap on the number per parcel is going to limit by, by itself.
Okay.
Because now you're suddenly.
Yeah, I, I think knowing is three quarters of the battle here. If you, if you have, you know, a thousand licenses, you'll know you have a problem.
Yeah.
We don't have any stipulation on how many cars can be parked along a neighborhood street, do we?
But we don't for owners, like owner occupied either, right?
You have to be parked on a surface parking lot in a residential neighborhood. You can't park on the grass.
Right.
Yeah, and then we usually, you know, require at least two parking spaces per property. One is typically in a garage and then one's in the driveway or two in the driveway.
But for example, if you're like an owner occupied house and you have ten cars, as long as they're operational, you can park them on the street, right?
Right. There's no limit, unless there's a no parking sign in the area, right?
Any final items? Yeah, Leah?
I, I just wanted to say I liked, even like apartment buildings couldn't have more than four because we don't, I don't think want an entire apartment building to be short-term rental. So I think you did a good job with.
It then becomes a hotel, not a apartment building. Again, there's some transient guest tags.
Yeah, which is why we put that definition of hotel in there.
Yeah.
Thanks, Brian. Good job.
Yeah, thank you. All right. And it is seven oh eight and that concludes our work session.